City Council President Nick Mosby, Committee Members, Councilwoman Danielle McCray from the Second District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the Third District, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Shleifer from the Fifth District, Councilwoman Sharon Green-Milton, Vice President of the Council from the Sixth District, Councilman Chris Burnett from the Eighth District, Councilman Robert Stokes from the Twelfth District, also joining us from the City Council, Councilman Zeke Cohen from the First District, Councilman Mark Conway from the Fourth District, Councilman James Torrance from the Seventh District, Councilman John Bullock from the Ninth District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the Tenth District, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the Fourteenth District. Also in attendance are a host of representatives from City Council President Nick Mosby's office, Mayor Brandon Scott's office, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research within Baltimore City's Department of Finance, other city agencies, and the Baltimore City Public School System. I'd like to note at the top that everyone testifying tonight is here because they care for and are invested in our city, and they feel strongly about some aspect of the budget. The testimony at times may be passionate. We expect that members of the council and members of the public will keep order and ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard this evening. Persons who are disruptive may be asked to leave or ejected from the virtual meeting. This night is not for the council to make speeches or to debate with members of the public. We are here to listen to your comments, which along with other written and verbal testimony we have received and will receive from the public, along with information received from agencies during their individual budget hearings next week, will help guide our decisions as we pass this year's budget. Again, we are here to listen to you and will not respond to testimony given this evening, but the Chair may ask clarifying questions as needed on behalf of any council members. I ask that any questions from council members for a member of the public be directed to the Chair. In addition, the Chair may make a statement that may be needed to guide the public in the proper direction if they are seeking information or guidance to city services. There are two points I do want to clarify at the top of this hearing in the hopes that we can head off some confusion. First, the mayor and the city council are not proposing an increase in real property tax rates. Announcement that you may have seen in the Baltimore Sun of proposed tax rates, which is required by state law, contains some confusing language, but the rate proposed is going to remain constant. The proposed real property tax rate is $2.24.8 cents per $100 of assessment, the same as the previous fiscal year. Second, a preliminary budget bill is crafted by the mayor and his team and approved by the Board of Estimates. The council has not yet made any changes or amendments to the budget bill. Under the current city charter, the council may cut funds from the budget, but does not have the charter power to reallocate those funds to different departments or programs without the cooperation of the mayor. While changes to this process were approved by the voters of Baltimore City through a charter amendment in 2020, those changes do not go into effect until July 1 of 2022. The first budget year those changes will affect will be for fiscal year 2024. Earlier today, the Ways and Means Committee received an update on the mayor's preliminary budget proposal from the Department of Finance. That briefing was recorded and will be available on the Charm TV Citizens Hub on YouTube at youtube.com/user/tv25bcocc. The preliminary fiscal year 2022 operating budget has been recommended at $3.843 billion. This is an increase of approximately $829 million above the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. The overwhelming majority of this increase comes from our federal appropriation of American Recovery Plan funding in the amount of approximately $640 million. The capital plan is recommended at $88 million. This is a decrease of approximately $336 million below the fiscal year 2021 adopted capital plan. This decrease is mainly attributable to a decrease in federal and state grant funding, along with decreases in enterprise utility spending. Before we get to public testimony, I'd like to recognize City Council President Nick Mosby for opening remarks.
Thank you Chairman Costello. Hello Baltimore. The folks in Baltimore have been very clear that you want your city leaders to take an evidence-based approach to look at, to look at driving down systemic, the city for far too long, and grow sustainable results to reverse structural inequities. We're here tonight to listen to you. This is not the time for the council to speak. This is a time for our citizens to speak, to let us know their priorities, let us know their concerns, and provide us with any feedback that you have. Next week, as the chairman said, we will host the agencies where we will go over the specific detail, the budget that the chairman talked about. You can watch it again on Charm City TV as well, as well as WebEx. And through this process, we want to gain meaningful understanding of the administration's plan to redirect resources that sustainably grow healthier and safer city. The city's budget, just like the budgets in our own individual households, speaks to our priorities. And that's what your council is here for in working directly hand in hand with the administration. While the council does not have the authority to direct spending, we can evaluate the mayor's plan and use the data that we develop to drive conversations and suggest areas where we can reinvest in our communities. The city charter requires that the council pass a budget by June the 25th, and the 2022 fiscal year begins July the 1st. Thank you for each and every one of you for tuning in tonight and participating in this process with your council, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
So we will now turn to a very brief presentation of about 10 minutes from Bob Seneme, City of Baltimore's budget, runs the Bureau of Budget and Management Research within the Department of Finance, and then we'll get to public testimony. Bob, the floor is yours.
Thank you Councilman Costello, Mr. President, and members of the council. My name is Bob Seneme, Budget Director representing the Department of Finance. I have a short presentation to share. If you could, I'm on the call. I don't have share access for my screen. If somebody on could allow that, I can pull it up.
Matt Stegman, if you could do that, please, and thank you. And I forgot to acknowledge Marguerite Curran, who's staff to the committee, going to be helping move all the trains on time this week, as well as Matt Stegman from Council President Mosby's office. Take it away, Bob.
Okay, thank you. So you should be able to see my screen now. Again, our objective here is to give a very brief overview of the fiscal '22 budget in advance of comments from, from our citizens. So first, by the numbers, the fiscal '22 plan, which we're just recited, overall, a plan is 400, I'm sorry, operating plan is $3.8 billion, capital plan $487.5 million. And the increase on the operating side, as previously mentioned, is largely due to the inclusion of the ARPA funds. Capital plan is down significantly this year, which is typical. Our capital plan generally goes in cycles and is driven by our need to go to the market for revenue bonds. The general fund budget is up 4.4% this year, but as I'll show you in a moment, most of that is from federal aid that we have available to us to cover the budget as a whole. I want to start with the revenue side really briefly. We believe on the general fund side that our local recovery will lag a bit behind national, global, and even state indicators. Our general fund recurring revenue sources are only projected to grow about 1.2% this year. And reason for that is that COVID-19, the pandemic, has, has hit urban areas very hard. We have seen, in a good way, some resiliency in some of our general fund sources, such as transfer and recrodation taxes and income taxes, but we have started to see an impact on our commercial property assessments for businesses that were affected by COVID. And we've had a sharp reduction in certain tourism-related sector revenues, namely parking revenues and hotel tax. And just in visual terms, what that looks like is this is our hotel tax over the last roughly two and a half years. And you can see that even with some cyclical nature of hotel tax post-COVID, for the last eight to 10 months, we've been below $1 million of receipts per month, so significant decline. And on the parking revenue side, same thing, in fiscal '21, we saw significant declines in our parking revenue coming from things like parking garages, parking taxes, parking meter revenue, and parking fines and penalties. We do expect those revenue sources that were hit hard in '21 to begin to recover in fiscal '22, but we do not expect all of our revenues to, to reach pre-COVID-19 levels in fiscal '22. With that as a backdrop, you know, our focus on the expenditure side was to maintain city services and try to deliver the best budget that we could, given the financial constraints. And so we are proud to announce in '22 that we are maintaining all critical city services. This was not the story we had last year in fiscal '21 when we had to make some reductions. This year, we're maintaining services. We are starting to slowly restore some things that were trimmed in the '21 budget, including adding back two graffiti removal crews that came out of the '21 budget. The tax rate is maintained at that $2.24 per $100 of assessed value, and it preserves a tax credit for residential owner occupied properties. We are utilizing $52 million of federal aid to continue to support our COVID-19 response, which I'll touch on in a moment. We're leveraging some city funds to access state weatherization resources, which we believe will enable us to do additional home weatherization projects. And we're continuing the implementation of our Enterprise Resource Planning System into Phase Two. I want to first touch on, on federal aid. There's three sources of federal aid in this budget. There's CARES Act money, FEMA reimbursement, and ARPA funds, or Recovery Act funds. CARES money, there's $24.5 million that will be used for either direct personnel in fire, in EMS service and health services, or for other city response costs, things like technology upgrades, PPE purchases, cleaning and decontamination services, all which we believe will be needed for some part of fiscal '22, as hopefully we see this pandemic wind down. On the FEMA side, we, we are expecting reimbursement from FEMA for a couple programs in particular. First, our food and shelter programs are eligible for FEMA reimbursement, and our vaccination sites are eligible for FEMA reimbursement as well. So we are, are budgeting those for half of the year. And also, the ARPA plan, the American Rescue Plan, we do know that we are set to receive about $640 million. Our deadline is to spend that money by 2024, which is the requirement in the federal law. So we still, we still do have some time. We haven't made decisions on this funding yet. We're setting up a process whereby we'll be receiving applications from, from city agencies and potentially external partners. Generally, the allowable uses for this money is to respond to the COVID-19 emergency or its negative economic consequences. So the rules are broad. We're asking for the appropriation in this year's budget, but we don't have specific plans yet to spend down the money, although we are, we are making a lot of progress on that, getting that process kicked off. Going through the base budget, a couple priorities to mention. On youth services, we're, we're continuing our support for the city schools, a total of $360.3 million in this year's budget across MOE retiree benefits, school construction contributions, and other services. The library will, will continue to maintain its service level, $27.6 million of investment from the general fund to begin to safely reopen our branches and to maintain some of the digital services that were started during COVID-19. In public safety, there's two highlights. One is we're kicking off the group violence reduction strategy. This is an evidence-based approach that has worked in other communities to reduce violence. We have raised money to start this program, and there will be support from the general fund for the new mayor's office of neighborhood safety and engagement. And we are also proposing to increase our 911 fee by 25 cents per phone line per month. And the reason for that is that our 911 service, which is a critical, of course, service in the city, the cost of that operation has grown faster than the revenue from the existing monthly 911 fee. And state legislation two years ago enables jurisdictions to do this this year. Baltimore City will be raising that fee, along with some other neighboring jurisdictions. I should mention here that, you know, I haven't listed the police budget here because there's no new investment in police services in this year's budget. There has been a lot of comment on the police budget. There is about a $20 million increase in the general fund budget, but that is largely, almost entirely due to certain fixed costs that are allocated to budget, namely pension contributions, workers' compensation costs, and active employee health benefit costs. And each of those three grew in the police budget, but also in other city agency budgets, and it's more noticeable in police. But I want to be clear, there's no new police investment in this budget. There's not additional police officers or other equipment or things of that sort in this year's budget. So we, the public safety budget is largely, again, a current services budget maintaining what we are already doing. On clean and healthy communities, DPW will continue its SOS program, which is a program where they clean up if there is a sewage backup that is not the fault of the homeowner. And we're also kicking off the recycling can program where we will be distributing cans to all eligible homes in Baltimore. Under our internal services, or what we call oversight or responsible stewardship of city resources, we have $200,000 in grant support for a digital equity coordinator to focus on how we can bring affordable internet access to, to folks in Baltimore that do not have it today. And we'll also be providing a $200,000 loan out of our Innovation Fund to BCIT to improve the online messaging system for 311 service requests. That is the budget in a nutshell. Again, there's a whole host of additional information. There was a hearing today where we went into a lot more detail that I would encourage folks to watch, and would also encourage anybody on the call to, to tune in next week as we get started on the agency budget hearings. And I'll pause there and turn it back to Councilman Costello. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate you taking time to be with us tonight and all the hard work of the folks within BBMR. Matt, can you please take down the presentation? I believe you're going to put up a slide for instructions on how members of the public may sign up to testify. Excellent. So as you'll see in this slide, and then I'll get into some of the specifics, we will be collecting or allowing folks to sign up until 7:30 PM, unless we end before that. Okay, so if we end at 6:30 PM and no one else has signed up to testify, we will go into recess. So instructions are here on the slide. We will now move into public testimony. If you have signed up to speak already, you will be called on and unmuted by one of our moderators when it is your turn to speak. If you wish to testify, you may sign up at baltimorecitycouncil.com тестify, as seen on the screen now. You may also use the hand raise function within WebEx, or stay on the phone line. When is your turn to speak? You will have two minutes. Our moderators or the Chair, myself, will let you know when your time has expired, and will also warn you as time is beginning to expire. If you are intending to speak, we suggest and respectfully request that you do the following. One, find a quiet location with a strong internet connection if you are not attending by phone. Two, please state your first and last name and any affiliations before you speak, so that you may be identified for the record. Three, participants who are not speaking will be muted on our ad, but to make sure we don't have to deal with background noise, please mute yourself when you are not speaking. Four, please speak slowly and clearly. And five, again, each speaker will have two minutes total to speak. Well, I understand, and we as a committee and a council, understand that everyone's feedback is critically important, and that's what we're here to listen to tonight. We want to make sure that we're being fair, and we are giving everyone the same opportunity to speak and share with us, so that we can hear what your concerns are. With that, Matt, if you could please take down the public testimony slide? And go to our first caller or viewer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Give me one moment, Mr. Chair. I'm finding the, the first person on the list.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, apologize for that, Mr. Chairman. Our first participant is Dr. Gwen DuBois, and I am going to attempt to unmute her now. Sorry, we do appear to be having a technical issue with Dr. DuBois. We can come back to her.
Matt, while you're doing that, I should also note that we received written testimony from about 55 individuals. That written testimony colleagues will be circulated. We were collecting written testimony right up until 4:30 this afternoon. So that testimony will be aggregated. It'll be put in a PDF document and will be circulated once staff from Council President Mosby's office have had a chance to put that in one PDF for us. That'll be circulated over email. I would ask everyone to keep an eye out for that, and, and please make sure you read that in its entirety. Back to you, Matt.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. We are going to attempt to go back to Dr. DuBois.
Hello? May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm real members of city council. My name's Dr. Gwen DuBois. I live in the Mount Washington neighborhood in this district. I was born, educated in our public schools in Baltimore. I raised my family here, educating my children in the public schools, practice as a primary care physician, and got my degree in public health here as well. Too many of my patients have lost their children to gun violence. I love Baltimore and so must speak out and urge you to reduce the amount of money we are investing policing while ignoring the root causes of violence, underfunding programs that are more likely to improve the lives of our children, give them hope and tools to lead meaningful lives. While our city population has plummeted, the amount we budget for police has climbed, so they are now spending $848 per resident more than 71 other major cities. In 2018, 83% of arrests were made for low-level, nonviolent crimes, and disproportionately those arrests were people of color. At the very least, these arrests disrupt people's lives, causing them to lose jobs, make it hard for them to find housing, lose wages during incarceration, and hurt family. This is what overpolicing can do. We should be investing in removing lead paint from housing, as Professor Lawrence Brown suggests. I've seen grown patients who were lead poisoned as children. In addition to behavior problems that often result in falling into the overpoliced criminal justice system, the loss of potential income and quality of life due to loss of IQ from lead poisoning deprives all of us of the gifts of these Baltimoreans robbed of their potential. Baltimore is second only to Detroit in number of evicted households, proportionally affected by affecting people of color. Too many Baltimoreans are forced to pay more than the recommended 30% income on housing. Too often substandard contaminated with lead, paint, mold, infestations. The proposed budget now calls for 25 million more in funding for police, and I understand what was just presented. Any rate, please let us see Mayor Scott's words for a holistic approach to violence in our city. We have not reduced violent crime by devoting so much of city finances to the solution. Remember the old saying, "To a hammer, everything looks like a nail." Often, police will respond...
Dr. Gwen, you cut out there? Dr. Gwen? Okay, we'll, we'll come back to Dr. Gwen. She had about 15 seconds left on her two minutes. Matt, can you please proceed to the next one?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Oh, sorry, it sounded like that might have... So about that, Mr. Chair, we, we do seem to still be having a, a technical issue with your permission. I would like to try to, as we identify folks and it is their turn to speak, to temporarily elevate them to panelists?
Absolutely. Let's do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The next person to testify is Caitlin Goldblatt, and Miss Goldblatt, I am elevating you now.
Okay, how's this working?
Take it away, Ms. Goldblatt.
Okay, great. Hi, my name's Caitlin Goldblatt, and I am a District 12 resident, and I am also a founding member of Scan the Police, a member of Baltimore Renters United, and a proud member of the Greater Baltimore Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. As a founding member of Scan the Police, my colleagues and I have listened to the Baltimore City Police Department's failure to live up to its own propaganda over the last year. Our conclusion has been that this department, 80% of which does not live in Baltimore City, with 10% of that 80% not living in Maryland at all, does not have Baltimore's best interests at heart. Scan the Police shares organizing blacks' demands. One, we demand defunding of the Baltimore City Police Department. Two, the creation of a community wellness trust fund. Three, investment into black communities. Four, the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and other quality of life issues. Most calls police officers in Baltimore City say they're responding to our business checks, which are actually proactive attempts by officers to go around and observe businesses on their patrols. They also perform a nearly equal number of vehicle stops, which are different from traffic stops in that the stops are not performed for any specific reason. They're largely quote-unquote investigative stops, which, when performed on the street, have been known as stop and frisks. When Baltimore City Police Officers do perform traffic stops, they have been required to turn over the racial demographics of those stops to the state since 2013, and eight years later have still failed to do so. We also repeatedly hear officers responding to possible overdoses without naloxone and without calling medical assistance until after they arrive. On Sunday, April 18th, the day before the six-year anniversary of Freddie Gray's death from injuries sustained following police officers brutally attacking him, we heard cops joke about a call about a woman's partner stabbing her with a screwdriver. One cop said, "There used to be such a thing as marriage counseling. Now they just call the cops on their spouse." While another cop laughed and responded, "And they want to defund us." This is not an isolated incident. The police of Baltimore...
Miss, Miss Goldblatt.
...protecting Baltimore residents. They're mocking us.
Miss Goldblatt, I'm asking to wrap up, please.
That was what I was doing. Thank you. Yep. Yep.
Matt, could you please elevate the next speaker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and we did have a request for panelists to please, when you are speaking, speak slowly. We do have a, we do have ASL interpreters helping make sure that this meeting is accessible, and we want to make sure that they're able to catch everything that is said. So with that, the next person signed up to testify is Dan Richmond, and I'm going to attempt to unmute Mr. Richmond now.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, council members, and...
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council members and staff, my name is Dan Richman, I live in the Patterson Park neighborhood in Council District One. So if some fixed costs are forcing an increase in some items of the police budget, then take it out of somewhere else, it is absolutely shameful and unacceptable that any further amount of our city's precious revenue is going to police when youth programs, community-based safety programs, affordable housing, and any other helpful services are underfunded. And we know that it's those kinds of services that actually fix underlying problems rather than make things worse, as the police do. Speaking as a taxpayer, I am really tired of having so much of my tax dollars spent on the police, and then still needing to create workarounds for public safety because the police department is so destructive and ineffective. For example, neighbors and I are working on implementing public safety programs that avoid calling the police, this is because we don't want children or adults swept into the incarceration system, we want skillful and nonviolent ways of responding to behavioral or substance abuse issues, and we want problems solved by community members rather than have community members criminalized just because of poverty or health issues. So the city is really working against us when it barely funds the scale of community-based safety programs that we need, and instead pours more funding to the police department that's worsening problems that we're trying to solve. Thank you, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. Matt, next one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the next person signed up to testify is Philip Clark, and I am going to elevate Mr. Clark at this time. Okay, he is in as a panelist, it does not appear that he is connected to the audio, so we'll move on and come back to Mr. Clark. Okay, the next person on our list is Quentin Debo, and I will elevate them to panelists at this time. Mr. Chair, the next person on our list is Anna Duke, I'm going to elevate her to panelists at this time.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, sorry about that, my name is Anna Duke, and I'm a resident of District Twelve, I am so sorry, I have bipolar one disorder, and in 2017, I had a manic episode that led to nine-one-one being called by my family. Instead of receiving emergency mental health care, I was placed in handcuffs and almost forced into a squad car until my family was able to convince them to take me away, still handcuffed, in an ambulance instead. I am certain that the only reason why I survived to testify in front of you today is because I'm white. Black bipolar men like Walter Wallace Jr. are murdered by the police when their mothers call them for help during manic episodes. Cops don't help during mental health crises, they just add armed squads ready to escalate and murder into an already charged situation. The nature of bipolar disorder guarantees that I will have further mental health crises that require medical intervention, which I am terrified will involve members of the Baltimore Police Department. As a Baltimore City resident, I echo Organizing Black and the C J S J's demands that one-hundred million dollars be cut from the BPD's budget and invested into black communities, for the creation of a thirty-million-dollar community wellness trust fund to be governed through participatory budgeting process, and the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and other quality of life issues. You need to remove the police entirely from responses to mental health distress, and we demand that Baltimore create an alternative to nine-one-one that does not dispatch police to connect the people in crisis, and instead connect them with resources that they need to live with dignity. Also, free Keith Davis Jr., thank you.
Thank you, Matt?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next person to testify is Rob Farrell, and I'm going to unmute Mr. Farrell at this time.
Matt, before we- Matt, hang on, hang on, Mr. Farrell, one second. There's- Okay. There's a bunch of comments in the chat thread. There's a Mr. Jacob Richardson who's asking, "I ask again, why am I being censored?" I'm not sure what that's in reference to, what I will say is you will have an opportunity to verbally speak this evening for two minutes, so please stay on the line, if that comment pertains to something else, I can't speak to that. Okay, Matt, please go back to, I think we have Mr. Farrell.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and unmute Mr. Farrell now.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Rob Farrell, I am the senior organizer with Organizing Black, and I'm also here representing the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. I live in West Baltimore and organize for racial justice, especially around the ways police interact with our community. When I talk to black residents of Baltimore, like a broken record, I hear that folks want a greater say in how their tax money is spent, and that they don't want police to be the immediate option. The bottom line is, they see, they don't see the help and assistance that they need, but they do see an occupying military force patrolling their communities repeatedly violating their constitutional rights, incarcerating them, their friends, and family for mostly nonviolent offenses. Organizing Black and C J S J demands that one-hundred million dollars be cut from BPD's budget. The constant growth of BPD's budget has not correlated in a decrease in crime or harm, and has only fed surveillance and police violence in black and brown communities. We would like a creation of thirty-million-dollar investment into a community wellness trust fund to be governed through a participatory budgeting process. Baltimoreans are more than capable of identifying what public safety looks like without police presence or surveillance tools. And then, again, we'd like to echo the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health, stress, distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and other quality of life issues. The problem that we have right now with the proposed pilot program is that police still maintain the authority in all of these situations, and police are just one second away from being called even if a mental health professional or someone else is dispatched. So we would like that separation completely from the process, and I yield the rest of my time for other folks to speak, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the next person signed up to testify is Julie Merrill, and I am going to elevate her to panelist at this time.
Hi, can you hear me right now? Yes, okay, thanks so much, thank you. Hi, I'm Julie Merrill, as a special educator at Baltimore City Schools, as a resident of Upper Fells in District One, and as a queer woman living in Baltimore, I am testifying today to demand that the mayor and city council reallocate resources from the current budget away from the police. As countless researchers have demonstrated time and time again, increasing police budgets does not decrease crime, instead providing housing, quality education, youth programming, and access to food, transportation, and healthcare for people reduces the circumstances that lead to crime in the first place. Budgets show priorities. Right now, the mayor is showing that he cares more about providing surveillance technology and deadly weapons to police officers than he cares about investing in black neighborhoods, families, and kids. As a teacher in Baltimore City, I work in a building that does not have potable water due to lead pipes, that does not have reliable heating or air conditioning, that has classes of over forty students, that has mice, cockroaches, and other pests living in the walls, and that is armed with surveillance cameras, metal detectors, and a school-based police officer instead of adequate funding for social workers, special educators, or reading interventions. I've spent countless hours this year talking with my students who are mourning the black people killed by police across the country, and who remember the uprising from six years ago. Each day, my students walk into a building that reminds them that the city cares more about policing them than investing in their education or future. Carceral punishments do not provide justice, arresting people does not right any wrongs. Please reduce the funding to the police department, instead fund our communities to stop injustices from happening in the first place. I endorse the demands of Organizing Black that you've cut one-hundred million dollars from the BPD budget to be allocated to Community Wellness Trust Fund and Black Communities. Additionally, it's imperative for Baltimore to begin developing alternatives to nine-one-one to cut police from responding to sensitive situations that are continually escalated by police. While the mayor's program today calls from the police might seem like a positive step, it is necessary for the program to exist outside of nine-one-one or existing infrastructure that is so fundamentally tied to the police. I'm testifying today as somebody who voted for Mayor Scott and was incredibly excited that Mayor Scott would champion the progressive values he purported to hold. I'm extremely disappointed in the mayor and his budget, and I reject the idea that we must maintain the status quo before reallocating funds. I point to Mayor Jones in St. Louis as an example of a progressive mayor whose budget immediately reallocated funds away from carceral punishments. Do better, Mr. Mayor, and free Keith Davis Jr.
Thank you, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the next speaker signed up to testify is Mr. Matt Hill, submitted testimony on behalf of Baltimore Renters United, and I will unmute Mr. Hill at this time.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Matt Hill, I'm an attorney at the Public Justice Center, again, testifying on behalf of Baltimore Renters United, we have submitted written testimony. Baltimore Renters United calls on the mayor and city council to radically reimagine the city budget to better recognize human rights, meet human needs, and provide residents a stronger voice in creating the budget. Bruce supports significant investments to meet priority housing needs that are not included in the proposed FY 2022 budget. For example, the council recently passed the right-to-counsel eviction law. Implementing this law as quickly as possible is urgent. Over twenty-eight thousand households in Baltimore City are facing eviction, eighty-two percent of households facing eviction statewide are persons of color. Because this budget appears to have already been decided upon, we call on the mayor and council to allocate an average of five million dollars a year over the next four fiscal years from the federal ARPA funds to implement this law. For future years, we strongly urge the mayor and council to engage in a more participatory process to set priorities and allocate significantly more funding to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to meet the city's many urgent and diverse housing needs. Now, the question's always, where does the money come from? We stand in solidarity with our friends calling on the city to defund the police and reallocate funds to meet these basic human needs, as well as violence interruption strategies. The city is not, second, the city is not fully investing in its future. The city can and should increase its issuance of general obligation bonds, provided more details about that in our testimony. The city also needs to urgently look at all of the tax expenditures in the budget. For instance, the city in FY 2022 is going to be spending twenty million dollars on the high-performance market-rate rental housing tax credit. This is an inequitable sham that only exacerbates the two Baltimores that dominate today. We urge the city council, that we urge the mayor, to take a closer look at all of these expenditures and reorient the budget and provide a more participatory process, thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next registered speaker is Ethan Hasek, and I am going to elevate him as a panelist at this time.
Can you hear me? Great, thank you so much to the honor room members of the city council, my name is Ethan Hasek, I live in Charles Village, and I'm here testifying on behalf of Jews United for Justice. J U F J organizes more than sixteen hundred people in the city to support local social, local social, racial, and economic justice issues. Jewish tradition teaches us to choose what gives life and sustenance. We are disappointed that the fiscal year 2022 Baltimore City preliminary budget continues a pattern of divesting and underinvesting from what gives life to our communities, while increasing investments in policing and punishment that take life away. As such, we're here to support the demands of Organizing Black, our coalition partner, and the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs, as well as the demands of Baltimore Renters United and the Baltimore Fair Elections Coalition. These demands are, first, a one-hundred-million-dollar cut from BPD's existing budget, the increases to police funding in this budget are unacceptable. Second, a thirty-million-dollar investment into Community Wellness Trust Fund to be governed through a participatory budgeting process. Third, a seventy-million-dollar additional investment to support quality, affordable housing, high-quality public education, universal healthcare, jobs, and universal basic income and community programs. Fourth, removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and other quality of life issues. Baltimore must create an alternative to nine-one-one that does not dispatch police but connects people in crisis with the mental health, housing treatment, and harm reduction resources they need to live with dignity. Fifth, two-point-five million dollars for a fund for council for renters facing eviction as part of the right-to-council program. And finally, two-point-five million dollars to fund the new fair elections program. In conclusion, the proposed budget that increases BPD funding and it doesn't adequately invest in new programs designed to keep people housed and it increases the political power of individual Baltimoreans. A budget is a moral document, we respectfully urge you to invest in supporting black, brown, and low-income communities, not in policing them, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Mr. Chairman, the next person signed up to testify is Samantha Master, and I will elevate them to panelist at this time. All right, we will move on to the next person. Okay, the next person that we have is Medya Kapoor, and I will elevate them to panelist at this time.
Sorry, having a computer malfunction.
I'm sorry, this Kapoor, we can hear you, if you want to proceed.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, my name is- My name is Theda, and I'm a resident of Mount Vernon. When I was eight years old, the KKK visited my family's house. They hung a noose from the trees in our yard. The cops came, took notes, and left. We never got another call or heard from them again. When I was sixteen, I called the police to report my assault. The cops refused to take me seriously despite all the emails and texts I showed them. When my ex-boyfriend admitted to assaulting me, they tried to talk me out of pressing charges for stalking successfully. Again, no one ever followed up with me or did anything to help me. At nineteen, I was teargassed by police for protesting a KKK congregation in the middle of my town. The police escorted the KKK members to and from places, showing the utmost concern for their safety. I'm now twenty-five years old, and a few months back, a Baltimore police officer followed me down the street screaming at me that I was a loser and that my parents were ashamed of me because I looked at him the wrong way. Every interaction I've ever had with the police has been tinged by fear and anger. No cop has ever helped stop or rehabilitate the people who've harmed me. We must divest from a broken policing system and invest in the Black community and infrastructure that creates a better Baltimore. Brandon Scott should not be giving BPD an additional $28 million. As a Baltimore City resident, I echo Organizing Black and CJ SJS' demand that $100 million be cut from BPD's budget invested into Black communities, the creation of a $30 million Community Wellness Fund to be governed through participatory budgeting process, and the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance abuse, sex work, homelessness, and other quality-of-life issues.
Is that all?
That's all.
Oh, thank you very much. Matt, next, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next person signed up is Bill Faina Yawon, and I will elevate them at this time. Okay, Mr. Chair, the next person signed up is Thomas James, and I am going to unmute him at this time.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. My name is Thomas James. I am a resident in Bel Air Edison. I am the visual arts director at Creative Alliance, as well as the chair of the Exhibitions Committee at UB Blake Cultural Center, both two anchor arts organizations within the city of Baltimore, serving over 5,000 youth per year. Through arts programming, we are able to do much more intervention when it comes to the quality of life of the youth within Baltimore rather than the overpolicing and crime that now that youth have been riddled with. And there is entirely too little funding for that when there is increase in an already ridiculously large budget for the Baltimore Police Department. So I come here today to support Organizing Black's demands, to defund the Baltimore City Police Department, creating a Community Wellness Trust Fund, and demanding an investment into Black communities as well as the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance abuse, sex work, homelessness, and other quality-of-life issues. There is so much more that we can invest in the city of Baltimore to improve the lives of not only our youth but our residents at large that do not include overpolicing. I used to live in Bolton Hill and literally moved fifteen minutes down the road to Bel Air Edison, which is essentially a police-occupied area, and there has not been any intervention when it comes to stopping crime or even just helping people feel safer. So I am in support of defunding the Baltimore Police Department, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had somebody who, I think there may have been a problem with the sign up. They did only sign up as Chris. We do only have one attendee signed in as a Chris, so that would be Chris Doherty, and I am going to make him panelist.
No, Matt, don't do that. That Chris is the CFO from the Baltimore City.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, that is probably not what we are looking for then. So if you did sign in only as Chris, please, if you could go through and.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure that representatives from the school system were listening as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, the next person signed up to speak is Jayla Scott, and I will unmute them at this time.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Jayla Scott, and I'm a resident of Charles Village. The police have never represented safety for me. They only evoke feelings of anger and fear. My mother was arrested in front of me and taken away from me for two years when I was five. My brother was arrested in front of me when I was fifteen and also taken away for several years. My father has been out of prison my entire life. The reality is no amount of police funding and presence would have prevented the crimes that my mother and father and brother have committed. No amount of police funding would have made the communities I grew up in safer. Policing does not create security. It only reinforces the cycle of violence and suffering y'all say it's supposed to stop. For those reasons, as a Baltimore City resident, I echo Organizing Black and CJ SJS' demands, which are the following: that $100 million be cut from BPD's budget, that Black communities are invested in, that there's a creation of a $30 million Community Wellness Trust Fund to be governed through a participatory budgeting process, and that there is a removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance abuse, sex work, homelessness, and other quality-of-life issues. Policing do not help our community. We need to find other things. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, apparently we sorted out the technical issue. We are going to go back to Bill Faina Yawon, and I will unmute them at this time.
Hi. Thank you so much. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much for returning to my turn. So my name is Bill Faina Yawon. I'm a community organizer, a restorative practices practitioner, and a circle keeper. In June 2015, Keith Davis Jr. was misidentified as a robbery suspect by four Baltimore police officers who chased him into an enclosed garage, and they shot at him over a dozen times. Keith was acquitted of the robbery after in a trial where the robbery victim testified that Keith was not the person who had committed the act. Even still, the police in Maryland Mosby office then claimed that a gun found near Keith in that garage had been used to murder Kevin Jones several hours later. While during the course of the trial, it was determined that the gun was never fired that day, that there was no DNA link between Keith Davis Jr. and Kevin Jones, and that one of the officers, Catherine Filippo, who shot Keith, was being investigated by the FBI for interstate drug trafficking. Despite all of these glaring problems with the case, and despite the Civilian Review Board sustaining excessive force complaints against all four of the officers who shot Keith Davis Jr., the Baltimore State's Attorney Office chose to not charge any of the officers who shot Keith, and they instead chose to prosecute Keith Davis Jr. four times. That makes Keith the second person in U.S. history to be tried this many times. These trials have resulted in two mistrials and two overturned guilty verdicts. They have also cost the city of Baltimore an estimated $1.2 million. That includes the cost of judges, of witnesses, of DNA evidence, which the state outsourced, police officers, court clerks, bailiffs, law clerks, utilities and operations, and the jury payment. It's clear that Baltimore residents are directly paying from the unjust prosecution of a police brutality victim. Taxpayers should not be funding, right? And we must challenge this abusive power and understand that the silence of not only the citizens of Baltimore but the city council implicates them all. On May 13, 2021, Judge Sylvester Cox granted.
Ma'am, 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 I'm going to ask you to wrap up here a little bit past your two minutes, okay?
Thank you. So on May 13, Keith was granted a new trial, which is making a way for him to be tried a fifth time. I'm calling on the city council to please urge Maryland Mosby and the Baltimore State's Attorney Office to not waste any more taxpayers' money and to say no.
Ma'am.
Thank you. It's okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's go to the next person, please, Matt. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next person registered is Gasso Goba, and I will unmute them at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, members of the city council.
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Gasso Goba, a former sex worker and organizer with Sex Workers Outreach Project Baltimore, and I condemn this proposed budget. The proposed fiscal year budget for 2022 is a moral and a direct assault to the wellness of Baltimore City's most vulnerable residents. In 2019, Open Society Institute, with the support of five community partners and over thirty outreach partners, surveyed over 4,000 city residents with the hope of using the data to inform change. Residents have already named their top priorities: increasing programs for our youth, restoring blighted homes, expanding safe streets, improving access to mental health and substance use programs, centering health and well-being, and increasing the police budget by $28 million to a total allotment of $555 million was not one of them for majority of the surveyed. Thanks to Communities United and Organizing Black, we know that for every $1 Baltimore City police receives, departments and programs that honor Baltimore City residents' collective vision of centering wellness and health are violently underfunded. For example, youth violence prevention programs such as supporting vulnerable youth with transitioning to the workforce or supporting youth in addressing mental health issues due to individual and generational trauma are allotted less than one cent for every $1 the Baltimore City Police Department receives. Mayor Brandon Scott, you ran declaring that the status quo just won't work, while increasing and maintaining the Baltimore City Police Department budget maintains and strengthens the status quo at the expense of vulnerable residents. Organizing Black have already presented demands that would honor and fund what residents have named as their top priorities to center health and wellness in Baltimore City. $100 million allotted dollars to be cut from Baltimore City Police Department's budget for $30 million to be reinvested into reimagining public safety, $70 million to be reinvested to strengthening our public school systems, community programs, healthcare, creating good-paying jobs, and to remove the Baltimore City Police Department from responding to calls related to mental health, sex work, drug use, homelessness, and other quality-of-life crimes. I am urging you all to disrupt the machine that places vulnerable residents in harm's way just so they can turn a profit for Maryland Correctional Enterprises. Maryland Scott, you have the power to vote against this budget and honor what residents have already named as their top priorities. Thank you, and free Keith Davis Jr. I yield my time.
Mr. Chair, the next person registered to speak is Angela Bernaco, and I will unmute them at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. I am a homeowner in the Ninth District. I am the co-founder of Baltimore Court Watch. I will incorporate the remarks from Bill Faina Yawon a few minutes ago. I am testifying tonight to ask you to stop Maryland Mosby's office from using taxpayer dollars to continue the malicious prosecutions of Keith Davis Jr. In addition to the remarks from Bill Faina, during the course of the robbery trial and four subsequent murder trials, the state attorney's office has used jailhouse snitch testimony, which was found to have been enticed. In addition to that, they have withheld exculpatory evidence. These trials have cost the city $1 million. They have cost Keith Davis Jr. and his family six years. I'll yield the rest of my time, but the city council has got to speak up. We do not want this violence carried out in our names any longer. Free Keith Davis Jr.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person registered to speak is Michaela Brown. I will attempt to elevate them to panelist at this time.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Brown. I am the executive director of Organizing Black, and I'm a Baltimore resident for the past twenty-nine years of my life. As a Baltimore City resident, of course, I am here to demand that $100 million be cut from BPD's budget and invested in Black communities, the creation of a $30 million Community Wellness Trust Fund to be governed through a participatory budgeting process, and the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and other quality-of-life issues. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person on our list is Philip Clark. We had a technical issue earlier, and I'm going to attempt to, Mr. Clark, to be a panelist at this time. Mr. Clark, you're unmuted.
Okay. Dear members of the city council, my name is Philip Clark. I'm speaking on behalf of the Greater Baltimore Democratic Socialists of America. DSA is a 50,000-member-strong political organization that seeks to end the exploitative and oppressive grip capitalism holds over humanity by allowing the economy and society to be democratically controlled. Our driving goal as socialists is to ensure people, primarily the working class, are valued as the most integral catalyst of society rather than profit margins or the whims of corporate elites. As socialists, quote, "We acknowledge abolition as the path forward." Through abolition and reparations, resources must be given to communities most deeply impacted by racism and policing, end quote. In keeping with these values, we firmly support measures to transform Baltimore by reallocating funding from the BPD, advancing farm reduction by investing in community safety. Instead of fully engaging in or respecting the communities they purport to serve, members of law enforcement have exploited, destabilized, and terrorized the districts to which they are assigned, defending property and capital before our collective humanity. History reminds us that American policing originates from the state's desire to capture formerly enslaved people of African descent who escaped the generational nightmare of the plantation. Baltimoreans yearn for transformation as so many communities have become accustomed to remaining hopeless, living in communities left dilapidated as a result of city leadership, consistently choosing gentrification and corporate development to realize social progress instead of concerted investment in the people who comprise the city's heart. The Baltimore DSA urges you, in solidarity with Organizing Black and Communities United, as members of the city council to remember our.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up your few seconds past your two minutes, please, and thank you.
Sure, sure, I'm just about to. We urge you to remember our children's uncharted futures as the fiscal budget for 2022 is considered. Defunding the BPD to refund Baltimore's future is the first step in realizing a new paradigm for community safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next person signed up to testify is Anyña Alhiri, and I will elevate them to panelist at this time. And I will elevate them to panelist at this time. Okay, we appear to be having a technical issue there. One moment to find the next person on the list, sir. Okay, the next person signed up to testify is Margaret Bale Palmquist. And I am going to attempt to raise her to panelist at this time. Hello, Margaret Palmquist?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Margaret Vale Palmquist. I'm a resident of D-12 and a proud member of the Greater Baltimore Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed increase in the Baltimore Police Department budget. We unequivocally need to defund the police. I am deeply hurt and angry to see not a slash in the bloated police budget, but rather an increase. We must stop providing BPD endless funds and weapons of war and taxpayer money to settle lawsuits when they inevitably use those weapons of war to terrorize citizens and uphold racial capitalism. The charade has been exposed for too many, particularly since the onset of the pandemic. We know what communities need, and it is not to have their tax dollars used for a civilian militia. We need resources. We need, need money for community centers, green, good, union jobs, free and accessible education and well-paid teachers, free and reliable internet for all. We need guaranteed healthcare, guaranteed housing, and an end to the war on drugs. We all live in this city together. I support Organizing Black's demands. We demand the defunding of the Baltimore Police Department. We demand the creation of a Community Wellness Trust Fund. We demand investment into Black communities. We demand the removal of police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and other quality-of-life issues. Stop the state sanctioned violence. Stop the helicopter joy rides. Defund the police. Refund the community. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the next person signed up is Aliyana Baron. And I am going to elevate them to panelist at this time.
Hi.
Hello, you're live.
Hi, my name is Elena. I'm a constituent of the fourteenth district. As a taxpayer in Baltimore City and an employee at the Pratt Library, I care deeply for my neighbors and community members. Every day, I see people work hard to take care of their families and live in joy and safety. Every day, I watch cruel and unnecessary barriers to justice and happiness working against Black people in Baltimore. The police, prisons, and court systems in this city don't prevent harm and violence. They respond to it after the fact, and their response is violent. It perpetuates violence. I want the money I give back to the city through my taxes to go towards measures that prevent harm and hardship, not cause it. Right now, I feel complicit in the pain of my neighbors and community members because my taxes pay for their oppression at the hands of the BPD. What would Baltimore look like if my tax dollars went toward free housing and healthcare for everybody instead of toward heavily armed men and women living outside our city who drive in every day to surveil and murder my neighbors? Might investing in security, safety, health, and education prevent more harm and violence? I hope that you, the elected representatives of our incredible city, will choose to be courageous in your stewardship and decision-making. I urge you to defund the BPD. I also want to say that I am deeply disappointed by the silence from elected officials in this city about the abuse of Keith Davis Jr. at the hands of the state's attorney's office and our publicly-elected state's attorney. Shame on Marilyn Mosby and all, and all who are too cowardly to speak out against this injustice. Free Keith Davis Jr. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next person to speak is Samantha Master. And I will unmute them at this time.
Hello, my name is Samantha Master. I am a third-generation Baltimore resident and a resident of the homeland community. I am also the communications manager for Organizing Black. I am deeply disappointed that the proposed budget would decrease funding for education and increase funding for policing, which has not proven to be effective. I am also the child of a domestic violence survivor. And when my mother was beaten, Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Police Department and police in general did not keep her safe. In fact, my mother had to navigate not calling the police on her abusive partner for fear that police would kill her partner. And so policing is not keeping us safe. I uplift the demands of Organizing Black that we defund the Baltimore City Police Department, that we create a Community Wellness Trust Fund that is governed by a participatory budgeting process, that we invest in our communities that absolutely deserve it, and that we remove police entirely from responses to mental health distress, substance use, sex work, homelessness, and other quality-of-life issues. This is about being on the right side of history. This is about what will you tell your children about how you acted in a moment when the nation is rising up around policing and its inherent violence and its history and the oppression of Black people? I demand that our city council people listen to us, and I demand that you all do better. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next person signed up to testify is Jacob Richardson. And I'm going to elevate them to a panelist right now. Okay, we seem to have a, a technical issue. Oh.
Sorry.
You're, you're.
Okay. Great, um. So we're on pace to have, get this one, we're on pace to have four hundred murders this year. So we'll definitely, we all know it's going to be a record year for murders. And there's only a tiny increase for the police in this budget. There should be at least a twenty-five percent increase. How many murders does it take for, for the city council to stand up, show some courage, and support the police? We have, and then we have a mayor and a city council president. We're already talking about defunding the police next year. Are you serious? How many murders does it take? We're gonna be at a record this year. We should be embarrassed. The police are the ones that keep us safe. When, when there's a violent, if somebody's having a mental health issue where there's violence, you can't send an unarmed nurse to treat that person. You have to have the police supporting. There is no way we can transfer all these calls away from the police. We'll have even more murders. And then how are we going to solve the murders we have? Who in their right mind would want to cut the police budget with so many open murder cases? These people deserve peace, a little peace. They lost their loved ones, and now we're not gonna solve the cases? Are you serious? You're gonna cut the police and, and take away any sense of closure the people have? Talk to somebody who's had lost a loved one to, to crime, to murder. And these meetings are always dominated by activists, the DSA and the Open Society. They don't represent Baltimore. These meetings should be the time when working people like myself can actually make the meetings. The working people of Baltimore support the police. Don't you dare defund the police next year. Don't make it so these crime, these victims of crime can never have closure in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next person signed up to testify is Carter Washington. Mr. Washington, you, you have been elevated to panelist if you'd like to try to.
Mr. Mr. Washington, if you could hang on one second, I, I, and I want to go back to some of my opening remarks, understanding that Mr. Washington, if you could hang on one second, please. I have no doubt that everyone on this call cares very, very deeply for Baltimore City. We all have different ideas about how to get to where we all want to be. But I think it's important that we be respectful of each other. I want to encourage anyone else who's on the call to direct their comments directly toward the city council members and not impugn the character of anyone else who has or will be speaking this evening. Thank you, Mr. Washington. The floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Washington, if you'd like to proceed. Mr. Washington? It does appear that you've connected and your microphone is unmuted.
Matt, let's leave Mr. Washington elevated as a panelist and mute him, and then we'll come back to him after the next caller, please.
Okay, sure thing, Mr. Chair. The next caller is Sandy Robson, and Sandy has, has been elevated to panelist.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I want to express my gratitude to all of you for the hard work that you all do for our city every day and for taking the time to listen to a lot of different points of view about all of this. I live in the fourteenth district, and I'm a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice, which works in collaboration with the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. And I am testing to ask that you shift the city's resources away from the police department and towards Black and Brown-led programs that contribute to the safety and well-being of Baltimore City residents. In addition, I ask that you advocate for the creation of a trust fund that communities can dictate where and how the money is reinvested. The people who are most impacted by violence should be at the forefront of what these solutions look like. We all know that the safest communities are the ones that have the most resources, and Black neighborhoods in our cities have been systematically divested for decades. A more equitable distribution of resources will make Baltimore a better place for all of us to live. Additionally, I hope that you will pursue options for making the budgeting process more participatory. While Taxpayers Night is a meaningful opportunity to hear from a lot of people, it comes too late in the process for our voices to really significantly have an impact. And additionally, I stand in solidarity with Baltimore Safe Haven in their request for financial support for LGBTQ folks experiencing homelessness. They also would like access to a building from the city grant funds for trans-led organizations to provide direct services and the creation of an LGBTQ office in City Hall. Additionally, I echo the calls to Free Keith Davis Jr. Thank you so much for your time, and I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Robson. Matt, if we could go back to Mr. Washington and see if he's able to speak.
Mr. Washington?
Hello?
Mr. Washington, the floor is yours, sir.
Hello?
Hello? Mr. Washington, we can hear you. The, the floor is yours.
Hello? I have an audio.
I think it's possible that Mr. Washington's audio may have muted the, the presentation, so we can hear him. He may not be able to hear us.
Matt, do we have a, I'm checking the list here. Do we have an email address for Mr. Washington?
Uh, yes, I do, and I can, I can try to reach out to him while we go on to the, to the next panelist.
Excellent, and let's just, please leave him elevated as a panelist in case we get the tech issue figured out.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Elaine Melas, and I will elevate them at this time.
And Matt, before we do that, there was a I, I, I fear that I'm not saying this name correctly, but Oh, Yin-Ye? Oh. She already spoke? Okay. Sorry, Matt, please proceed.
Elaine, you're unmuted. Can you proceed?
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Elaine Melas, and I'm a resident of District fourteen. It is a disservice to the city of Baltimore and its residents to continue to increase the cost of Baltimore Police Department. Baltimore Police Department is the biggest group in Baltimore who's carrying guns, and clearly, they do not keep the public safe, as we regularly hear from the state's attorney's office that gun possession is a risk to public safety. I am in support of the demands of Organizing Black, the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs, as well as Team Keith. It is a gross injustice that Keith Davis Jr. is up for prosecution for a fifth time on our taxpayers' dime, costing us millions of dollars. Baltimore residents are directly paying for the unjust prosecution of a police brutality victim, and this is only one example of BPD and city officials such as Mayor Scott and the city council wasting community resources on policing that should be going to people who need it, such as the Black communities that have been systematically divested by this city. I demand that money is reallocated from Baltimore Police Department into life-affirming resources and that Marilyn Mosby and the Baltimore State's Attorney's Office drop the charges against Free Keith Davis Jr., against Keith Davis Jr. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mr. Washington, can you join us yet? Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna go. Okay, so there's, there's a chat in the comment. I'm, I'm, I'm only gonna read this one because it's Mr. Washington, and we've clearly been having technical issues trying to get Mr. Washington. How you doing, Mr. Washington? Can you hear me? Shake your thumbs up, you can hear me? Okay, about a couple minutes ago, you were saying hello. We could actually hear you. So can you, can you do what you were doing before? See if that worked?
Hello?
Okay. Mr. Washington, do you see my thumbs up? That means I can hear you.
Yeah, I, I, I see your thumbs up.
Go ahead. Where's yours, sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. City Budget Hearing, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. My name is Carter, and I live in East Baltimore. I wanted to speak to you about why I support more funding for Baltimore Police Department. There have been gunshots in my neighborhood and some other incidents of violence. I was always glad to see the police show up. And when something goes wrong, they try to understand the whole story and listen. I see that the police department is doing a great job with being helpful to the citizens of Baltimore. The Eastern District is in charge of my neighborhood, and they have been I wish that we had police walking around and stopping the trouble before it starts. I realize that this is not going to happen if they do not get more funding. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Washington. Matt, there's a Oh Yin-Ye said something in the chat.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we did attempt to elevate. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we did attempt to elevate Oyinyi Alhiri previously and had a technical issue, but it appears to be resolved now. So if we could take their testimony at this time.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Like a million times. Okay, great, thank you. Sorry for the issues before. My name is Oyinyi and I live in Upton. In this year alone, over 350 people have been killed by police officers, including children like Mathia Bryant in Ohio and Alex Toledo in Chicago. The majority of police murder victims are black and Latino and it could not be clearer that policing is a public health hazard. Police do not solve or prevent crimes. Policing and incarceration do not keep us safe. There have been many studies showing that adequate education, stable affordable housing, a living wage and access to health services are better reducing and preventing violence and harm than police or prisons. 10 years ago, our city had the lowest homicide rate we have seen since the 70s and our budget wasn't even half of what is being proposed for 2022. Each year our budget increases and each year the homicide rate hits a new record, even as our city population plummets. We continue to spend pennies and dimes on the dollar for fundamental services compared to what we give to a department that has demonstrated its inability to prevent harm in our communities, including gun violence, intimate partner violence, opioid overdose, hunger, homelessness and other social ailments. We do not want more money for police pensions and benefits. We want economic and social reinvestment in East, West and South Baltimore where many people lack access to basic resources. Spending on law enforcement in our criminal, criminal legal system dramatically outpaces spending on community services, institutions that build safe, thriving, healthy communities. The same consent decree that was instituted to hold our police accountable in the wake of Freddie Gray's murder has since been used to justify increased police spending. Instead of continuing to funnel money to BPD, we need to use that money to fund our schools and childcare, develop and strengthen mobile crisis services, peer counseling services, crisis hotlines, community mediation programs, build deeply affordable housing, fund eviction prevention programs, create avenues for community land stewardship, fund community gardens, the list goes on and on. To proceed with this budget tells us, the citizens of Baltimore, representatives of Baltimore, that you do not care about the needs and demands of the people.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to, to wrap up because you're a little bit past the two minutes, please, and thank you.
This is my last sentence. If you want to create holistically healthy and safe communities, it's time to make some transformative changes, including creating a community wellness trust fund and pivoting to a participatory budget that allows for determination of budget priorities by and for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next registered speaker is Randy Johnson and I will unmute them at this time.
Hey, good evening. Y'all tired of sitting down?
No, no, sir, we're just getting.
That's right. So I'm from District 4. I teach middle school math in the city and I believe that numbers need to have context. And so we use the Baltimore budget for the context of our math program this year. And the question that we asked was, how does Baltimore City make and spend money? And when we got to the spending part, it was really interesting that students didn't think that they were being valued. And so we answered the question, what issues and problems do you see in Baltimore City that could be addressed by the budget? And the different issues they brought up in no particular order are school funding inequity, human trafficking, neighborhood funding inequity, littering and pollution, healthcare, specifically counseling and the vaccine rollout, police brutality, homelessness, funding or defunding the police, crime, drugs, food apartheid, gender equity and vacant houses. And the student that really I feel like nailed it on the head was the one who talked about the problem of corruption. In the, the response to what can we do? What were the solutions that were given? Some were very practical for littering, put more trash cans out, but they didn't understand the inequities that were happening because we had to dig deeper. We feel like you all understand the inequities that are happening. We feel like you made it to this position for a reason. You got elected to this position for a reason. The most disheartening thing that I read as far as a response to, and do you think this could actually be fixed? Or do you think this problem could be solved in real life? And they said no. And I don't think the budget gives them hope. I think the budget tells them more of the same, what they do know, that young ladies and young men are not cared for. They're not supported with counseling services, with wraparound services. Once they leave school, their schools aren't funded properly. And we really just ask you to make a change that's going to give the children some motivation. We want you to inspire them and not to mire them. That's my time.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your work with our young people.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next person signed up to speak is Peter Machetti and I will unmute them at this time.
Hi, this is Peter, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, hi, so my name's Peter Machet. I'm a resident of District 14 and I'm a member of the Greater Baltimore Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. I've come to echo the demands of Organizing Black and CJ S.J. for $100 million reduction in the police budget, the creation of a $30 million community safety trust fund and removal of police from schools and responses to quality of life issues. The calls for defunding the police and for non-police responses aren't just some idealistic dream. It's backed up by the data. And I wonder if the city council actually has an accurate perception of what the police really do. By BPD's own metrics, 62% of all of the calls for service are for non-emergency reasons. If you add low priority calls to that, that's up to 79%. If you dig into what these calls of service are for, the most common one by a landslide is a business check with a full one-third of the 1.5 million calls for that purpose. What a sad waste. We have members of our community providing a blueprint for a change in direction that would address both the root causes of crime and the vast disparities we have in our city. We could fund lead abatement, healthcare, housing, youth programs, et cetera. Instead, we continue to throw money at an organization that the DOJ has said is too racist to manage itself, refuses to be accountable and whose work does not meaningfully address crime in the city. Finally, I'd like to encourage the city council to speak up about the continued prosecution of Keith Davis Jr. Other callers have identified many issues with the facts of the case and the continued prosecution by the state's attorney's office amounts to malicious prosecution of a police brutality victim. This is occurring at a not insignificant cost to the taxpayers of our city and needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, the next person signed up to speak is Jack Shock and I will unmute them at this time. Jack Shock, you are unmuted, you're free to proceed.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Jack Shock. I was born and raised in Baltimore, currently living in District 45 in Mount Vernon. And I would like to use my time to amplify the demands of Organizing Black. Demand number one is to cut the Baltimore Police Department's budget by $100 million. An increase in police spending does not prevent crime, has only increased the surveillance and police violence in black and brown communities. Our public safety funds should be redirected to our undervalued schools, employment initiatives, affordable housing, youth recreation, access to healthy foods in food deserts, affordable healthcare, just generally meeting the needs of the community and not giving more money to men with guns who seemingly feel constantly threatened by the people they're sworn to protect. Demand number two is to allocate $30 million for a community wellness trust fund. This fund is to be governed through a participatory budgeting process to ensure Baltimoreans decide how we want our public safety system to work for us, the money, the people who pay for it and whose lives depend on it. Demand number three is to invest in black communities. Invest $70 million to support affordable housing, high-quality public education, universal healthcare, jobs, universal basic income and community programs in historically under-invested black neighborhoods. And demand number four is to remove police from responding to calls for mental health, emergencies, substance use, sex work, homelessness and other quality of life issues. City funds should be allocated to create an alternative to 911 that doesn't dispatch police and the police do not have control over, to connect people with mental health, housing, drug treatment and/or harm reduction resources that give us the dignity we need to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, the next person signed up is Matthew Lewis. While I am elevating Mr. Lewis, just a technical note, any, any attendees in the meeting, if you have the option to connect to audio, if you look at the bottom of your screen and it gives you an option to hit a button to connect to audio, that should give you the ability to access your microphone at the appropriate time. So again, if you do see that, please make use of that ability. Thank you. And with that, Mr. Lewis should be elevated.
Yes, hello. Thank you for having the time to be here and listen to me tonight. My name is Matthew Lewis and I'm also a member, I work at Johns Hopkins University and also a member of the Greater Baltimore DSA Steering Committee. I want to just second and just restate the demands of my comrades and the, and the citizens of Organizing Black. I think one of the biggest things that we need to work on in the city is making it more participatory, making it more actually based in popular demands and popular control. One of the things that hasn't been discussed tonight much is the fact that we are burning trash constantly every day in the city and we are not beginning to move forward with zero waste in a meaningful way. I think that a good number, number of people are sick and tired of seeing the city as dirty and as polluted as it is. I think many people would say that's probably up there on their top three things that they want to change about the city. I think a lot of what can be done in this city could be done by defunding the police, could be providing actual investment in economic opportunities within communities, specifically black communities, those most impacted by these toxic pollution and greenhouse gas changing to our, our environment. I think we desperately need to begin to think critically about how the money of the city can be going to making the city easier to live in, with transit and safer to live in and for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that is the last person that we have signed up to testify at this time. There were a couple of folks who had signed up and I was not able to identify them in the in the attendee list. So if you bear with me for one moment, I'm going to do a quick check to see if any of those folks can be identified.
Sure thing, Matt. And when you say the folks who were signed up to testify that we just cycled through, were those all through the WebEx platform or were there a mix with folks who were dialed?
That, that is the, the WebEx attendee list, sir.
Okay. And do we have folks on the, on the telephone line as well, Matt?
It does not appear that way.
Okay. We will, we will await direction from you, sir.
Mr. Chair, again, it does appear that everybody who has signed up to testify and is signed in to the hearing has done so.
Thank you, Matt. I want to thank everyone for their testimony. Before we go into next steps, I want to turn the floor over to Council President Nick Mosby for any closing remarks for Taxpayer Night. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the citizens of Baltimore. I believe we had over 50 folks sign up with written testimony and over 70 signed up with oral testimony. This is a testament to the importance of where we are in our city as it relates to this important process through the budget. It was, as was previously discussed, you know, the current budget and what we're talking about in the allocation is what was presented to the council from the administration. That budget was passed through the Board of Estimates and now it's the council's time and opportunity to really work with the agencies to better understand where we are, but more importantly, where we're going. We've constantly heard about the importance of driving sustainable change in our communities by creating more public safety apparatuses and providing more opportunities for our young folks. And you know, as we work with the administration to look to redirect funds, to ensure that they go after the things we know through empirical data, really change and drive results in our community. That's exactly what this council is and is about. So for everybody, no matter what part of the aisle you stand on, no matter what your ideology or what your perspective or opinion is about where we are today, we thank you for coming and participating and we thank you for your civic engagement. The one thing I'll close out and ask is that you continue to participate in this budget process, that you listen into the budget hearings next week and you help this council perfect this, this process. As the start of this administration, as we'll continue this administration, our whole mentality was professionalizing the council in a way that we had not seen before, by ensuring we had the skill sets in places to drive more transparency, but more importantly, to drive substantive change as it relates to the legislative process. I think that's one thing that we've been able to start and will continue to grow and that's what we look to have your, your support. So, Mr. Chair, thank you again for hosting this Taxpayers Night. And to the taxpayers, it does not start or stop here. We need your continued involvement.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd also like to thank everyone who participated this evening. Your comments have been heard and members of the committee and the entire city council appreciate you taking time to share your thoughts on this budget. City council may consider the adoption of fiscal year 2022 tax rate at a meeting of the city council on June 8. In the meantime, the Ways and Means Committee budget hearings will resume on Tuesday, June 1st at 9:00 a.m. Hearings will go from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on June 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th and 7th. Full budget hearing schedule is available on the city council's website at baltimore legislators dot com slash calendar or you can also go to baltimorecitycouncil dot com and click on the Legislative Calendar button at the top left. Thank you all and we are now in recess.